Pledge allegiance to the flag, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under the indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. First item under number three, bold business, is to review, discuss an act appointment of animal inspector. It's that time of year, we don't appoint, we just nominate, and the state will make the appointment. For the last probably fifteen years, our animal inspector has been Stacy Ferry.
She's not here.
And, you know, she's done it for that long. I don't know of any other people that may be interested. If somebody has a nomination, then I will accept the nomination of Stacy Ferry. From someone. Is there a nomination?
Make the nomination for Stacy Ferry for animal inspector.
Second.
Second? Okay, motion made in seconded to nominate Stacy Ferry as animal inspector for the town of Dayton. Is there any further discussion?
Just one thing, this is the only reason I hesitate, she had no, she wants to do it, right? She had no issue.
As I know, yeah, I mean, there hasn't been much activity over the last year due to COVID, because they had, the state had stopped the inspections out there, yes.
We did invite her to tonight's meeting, so.
Yeah, I mean, she-
She's been on for years, I, I'm, I'm fine, I'm happy with her.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this is only a nomination through the end of this year anyway, fiscal year, correct?
Fiscal year twenty-two.
This is through fiscal year twenty-two. Oh, okay, so this, I got you.
Well, we, I would vote yes, and then if she always says she had an issue with it, she can always-
Well, yeah, I mean-
She starts to accept and send the papers into the state.
She has to accept it and get it notarized if she wants to do it.
If she declines, then we'll just revisit it.
Yeah, we'll go from there. So at this point, the nomination is for Stacy Ferry. All in favor?
Aye.
Foes, that carries nomination of Stacy Ferry, for the record. Three B, to review, discuss an act and reinstate all Board of Health inspections. I'm sure our health agent is going to address this, but since the restrictions on COVID has probably nearly gone totally away, we will begin doing food inspections and the other inspections as necessary that are required either annually or every six months, so. Do you want to add anything, Todd?
I just want to say I'm looking forward to being a health agent again, instead of just being a COVID agent.
So are we.
So, it's, it's been a long year, but yeah, I think it's time to start getting back out there and
Okay.
checking on places. But obviously, I just want to make sure, I mean, we haven't heard from the state yet, but assuming that June fifteenth is when the state of emergency ends, that come June sixteenth, it's fair game, so.
Okay, so it's effective June sixteenth, that we can start inspecting.
So, just for a quick discussion, at last selectman's meeting, we appointed an assistant finally to help me with some of these routine inspections. So I don't know if the Board of Health is interested in teaming up with my department and doing a joint inspection with the new assistant, because a lot of the establishments that Mr. Pilling needs to go to are the same ones that I haven't been to either for over a year. So, is that something you want to consider? Then, you know, we can have Nancy set up appointments and we can get them all caught up.
Yeah, it doesn't bother me whether we go with one person, two people, three people, doesn't matter.
Because there are inspections that entail the fire chief, yourself, Board of Health, so.
Yeah, the fire department really is involved in the end-of-year liquor license inspections, but these particular inspections that I know Agent Pilling hasn't been doing are the same ones that I haven't been doing, so. It might, it might be good for us to go to these establishments together.
Okay. Any discussion on this? Yeah, I don't, I don't see a prob, that would probably work out very well, actually.
Yeah, for us and for the property-
Same food restaurants, or the restaurants he goes into, you go with as well.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, you're checking for your stuff, so, yeah.
So-
They would say that too, when I would finish the inspection, they were like, oh, Jim was just here.
Yeah, yeah.
With all that being said, is there a motion to reinstate all Board of Health inspections effective June six, sixteen?
Someone?
Second. Okay, motion is made in seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, myself. Motion carries. Moving on to three C, to review, discuss an act employment of an on-call as-needed transfer station attendant. We did reach out and try to fill this position. We didn't get any responses. This is going to be an ongoing posting going forward. We were hopeful that we could get somebody before Mr. Ryan's current transfer station attendant went off for surgery on June tenth. But it didn't work out as we had hoped. But we will continue to try to do this. So right now, the, just for anybody that's watching, I'll explain what this is exactly. Transfer station is open on Tuesdays from nine to eleven and Saturdays from eight to three. In the case of an absence, the hours are filled by another department, which costs the town overtime, time and a half. Probably about the tune of thirty-five to forty dollars an hour. So, we are hopeful that we can get someone, I mean, there's no guarantee of hours, but the current rate of pay is sixteen seventy-nine, I believe. So on a Saturday, if the current attendant should happen to fall out for some reason or want to go on vacation, there would be an opportunity for seven hours of pay on that date, at that amount, so. This will be an ongoing request, like I said, and if I didn't work for the town, I'd probably do it, but. Anyway, just follow our website and you'll see what's required of the position. And send us a email or a letter of interest, and we'll go from there. So three D, is review, discuss an act COVID-nineteen updates, where we at?
I just want to say for three C, that Mr. Ryan's has done an excellent job up there. We had
Absolutely.
only good stuff from him. He's been very on top of everything and ahead of the game. It's been good for office staff to have somebody competent up there doing their thing. Not that the guy before him wasn't, but I'm just saying that he's done a great job, so.
Yeah, he has.
Like I said in last meeting too, a couple times I've been up there, he's been very attentive and right on top. Very, very happy how things are going up there, so.
It's not a hard job, if anybody's interested in something like that.
No, but continuing on that note, so obviously, we're going to be using DPW staff. Obviously, we don't have a lot of money in the budget for that, so we're going to have to be kind of keeping an eye on that and seeing where we go. And when I get into inspectors' report, we'll, we'll talk more about that, because we've got trash numbers to go over to, but we'll come back to that later. So COVID-nineteen updates, as everybody knows, May twenty-ninth, effectively, COVID is over. Masks don't need to be worn unless the place you're going into is asking for them. Or if you're a student at a school, and there's some exceptions to that, like if you're at prime time or something along those lines. But we went around to all the local restaurants and retailers in town to let them know, and they were all very happy to know that. Because it's been difficult for enforcing, because there's a lot of people that don't want to wear masks and do want to wear masks, and it can be difficult, so. But it's kind of behind us now. The number of cases is going way down, we're getting like one case a week. So it's been much, much, much more manageable. However, we're really, really far behind, like all the paperwork for COVID and other stuff, and we're trying to create database for the homebound people and that kind of thing. So we still get a lot of COVID catch-up work to do, like debriefing, if you will, but otherwise, it's, it's all good.
Okay. Want to add anything, either one of you?
I believe the state is looking, or just did change, there will be no more close contacts exposed outdoors.
That came out yesterday, today, yeah?
So, there will only be, there will only be close contacts considered if you're in an indoor environment. That's a pretty big-
It is pretty big.
Okay, we can move on to new business, if there's nothing, no more comments on that. Four A, review, discuss an act on body art studio inquiry. We have a gentleman with us tonight who's interested in opening a body art studio within the town. I understand he's also a town resident.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, before you get started, I'd like to temporarily leave the meeting. I own a building in town that could potentially lease to establishment like this, so I don't want to be part of the decisions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
For the record, Mr. Aguirre is accusing himself for this discussion. Okay, why don't we, we'll start with your name and your address here and-
Hold on. Do we need him closer to my microphone, Dave?
Yeah, probably would help. Can he sit over by Jim's side, please?
What's up to you? Do you want to go over there?
Yeah, we've got a camera all set, anyway. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jeff Ryan. I live in Dayton, Mass. And I'm here to inquire about the town adopting the chapter one-eleven policy for the model from the state. Currently, there's no application process in Dayton. I'm a current owner of a shop in Eastern for the last thirteen years. I decided to sell the business, not, sell the building and not my business. Looking to move, kind of downsize a little bit. I'm looking to move from four hours down to maybe two. And I'd like to try to open up in Dayton. When I was in Eastern, they didn't have a policy either back then, so I worked closely with the Board of Health to try to develop certain things and procedures outside of the model, because the Board of Health can change the procedures in such a way that the town would like. I do have a building in mind, a location which I checked with the zoning board, nineteen oh-one, County Street, Unit One. So I'm looking to start the process, hopefully, if I'm able to, in this town, and that's why I'm here.
Okay. We did have, years ago, well, let me start, let me back up a pinch here. Years ago, the Board of Health was also the Board of Selectmen. And we did have some regulations that were presented by Mr. Bernado, and we went through the process of attempting to adopt them. The problem was, the Board of Selectmen at the time was also the Board of Health. And there were some recommendations to remove certain parts of the regulation that had an impact on what we would have liked to have done, or seen done. So, we're back at square one. We are not, I don't know if anybody is, but-
Well, my recondi, I would recommend, if, if I'm at the point where there is a policy, that my business in Eastern, we were totally disposable, which means we throw everything away. There's no autoclave. So we don't get involved with the autoclave process, everything gets disposed of. And we were able to do minors in Eastern from sixteen to eighteen with parental consent. That, again, is up to the Board of Health. They can take the regulations and they can do them as they want, as far as changing. I plan on opening, if I do open here, if I'm able to open here, only until eight o'clock at night, and there'll be two days off. I don't want to open late. From ten o'clock to eight would be fine, if I can just establish that hours here. I, during the fourteen years that I've been business in Eastern, I've never had one complaint. I worked close with the Board of Health. We have a good reputation. We have over seven thousand clients, and none of them want me to retire.
Okay. Well, I'm pleased that you, you want to start the process and get something going in Dayton. We certainly can use different types of establishments, including what, you know, your type of establishment. We are, as far as I'm concerned, willing to start the process and move forward. I don't think you're opposed to-
No, if I could, I, back in two thousand seventeen, Ross, I think it's, two thousand seventeen?
Sixteen.
I wish it was fifteen.
Sixteen.
So, let me just go back, so everybody knows what happened with the tattoo regulation, or body art, I should say, body art practitioner. And I believe it's still in place. So, at that time, we had adopted regulations where you could add non-criminal disposition. So we adopted, we, first we adopted a local one, talking about land use and how people supposed to keep their properties clean. We changed some verbiage there. And then we added a non-criminal disposition for anyone, so when we went out for a food inspection, there was food, tanning, swimming pool, and can't remember the other one, if you could just- But it was, it was those four. If you went out to do an inspection, you would have the ability to give out a ticket, non-criminal disposition. And then when, at the same time, I used, I was working in Lakeville at the time, I used Lakeville's, and it's on, it's on there, Lakeville's regulations, which I believe they got it from Randolph. So if you go on the, if you go on the website of Randolph and Lakeville, they're identical, and we actually adopted that one.
Except that it didn't end up going through like that. It, the Selectmen pulled out part C, and part C was tanning, swimming, body art.
They removed that section of the regs before it went forward.
They moved the word regulations, not, not by law, from my understanding.
Okay, it was the whole section.
Some more research on-
And then it got rejected too, didn't it?
Yeah.
And then the Attorney General rejected it, so it never-
Yeah, by law, without to go to town, we involve the community's approval, regulation, this would be our regulation here.
That was my understanding. So we posted it, and the same thing.
We had the hearing, we did the two readings of the regulations, but I'm not sure what actually-
We can't seem to find that it ever actually finished.
I guess we're gonna have to look.
We went through the whole process.
We did.
I think, you know, and if, I, I don't, I'm not sure how soon you're looking at to get open and but I, I, I think, at this point, we really don't have any body art establishment or practitioner regulations in place. We really should have, and things happened and things got
Yeah.
lost and mixed up, and they ended up going away. So, again, I'm not sure how quick you're looking to get open. Unfortunately, regulation, you have to discuss in an open meeting, it has to be on the agenda, so like, we could do that next, you know, at our next meeting. And then we'd have to set a hearing date in that point, you know, then, as long as there was no objection, it would get approved, and then there would be an effective date, things like that, so.
But I understand with the one you're talking about, there's a model regulation on-
There is, there's a general model regulation from the state.
You just plug in the, you plug in-
And I know that when, working with Eastern, we wanted certain things to happen in that regulation. So, we, we set those in there, and we've never had a problem with them.
That would have to be, we would have to discuss those, those limitations, the age, if there was autoclave. And I'm not, I'm in favor, as well, as I was at the school.
I don't, I don't know anybody that uses an autoclave anymore.
Well, they, there's a lot that do the autoclave, and if you don't obviously keep up with the score tests and everything else, and it's just, we don't, it just, it doesn't make sense. You know, if you're not cleaning them, and, but you know, it's cheaper to get a disposal and throw everything away, because they're all sanitized.
Machine itself's expensive, the testing on it's expensive, the operation.
It's not much as the machine is how you cover it, and how you cover the clipboard, a clip cord that holds it, and nothing rubs against it, be your client. And, you know, the inks are done properly, that, they have expiration date on the inks, and the sheets on them, all the, you know, what they're, what's in them. There's no more metal in those at all, mostly a vegan right now, which is good. It's come a long way. It's become a hobby, and now it's a business, so.
I think we can probably get through this two to three months. I'd say like by, by early, early August.
I personally would prefer quicker, but if, if that's not possible, it's not possible.
I think what we could do is put on our next agenda, regardless of, this should be on our next agenda anyways, we can look at where we left off on this one, and we can actually open up the model one and decide on, because we're gonna need it regardless, if this doesn't, if this, something happened, I, I don't know. How we just left it, if it didn't happen, why did we just leave it to the side?
I mean, really, potentially at this point, I mean, he could open, fly open, and then whatever regulations we call it, you would just have to come with the compliance.
My, my license is current right now, but it's in the town of Eastern. I do have, I did all the aftercare, the consent forms, and everything else for the town of Eastern, and we combined that with the model, and they came to a conclusion that, you know, we could do minors at the time. But I chose not to do minors where you can see the tattoos and the short-sleeve shirt on. That was my policy. I don't do face tattoos. We don't do face tattoos, or minors on fingers or hands.
I could just tell you straight off, I'm not, I'm not in favor of minors, yeah.
That's fine. It's, it's less work for me. It really is.
Personally, because at that, at that time, the parents could cave in and say, yeah, 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 it's just that, yeah, I'm full tattoos, but for a child to get a tattoo, a minor, absolutely not.
And that's not a problem at all.
You sent us the Lakeville one, right?
I believe we ad, we adopted the Lakeville.
Yeah, so if you want to look at the Lakeville site, we're probably gonna adopt the same thing.
That's the mo, the state model.
Okay. And I was reading the Lakeville one today, which, you know, it's pretty straightforward, and I, I think if you read that, you'll probably get an idea of what our reg is going to be. I'm open to anything as far as expediting this, it's-
I think Matt's idea is pretty good.
I, I mean, if there's no regulation in place, there's nothing for us to stop something from happening, right? So, you can go in, do whatever you gotta do, you know, I don't, do we even have, do we even have a permit at this point, right now?
There was a fee on there. I don't think we have an application, if that's what you're asking for.
Basically, just get the fee, if you will.
I guess, I guess-
And then, you know, at some point between now and when we get it passed, you know, if, if there's any differences, then you would just have to come with the compliance. But at least that way, you can get your ball rolling.
I guess, thank you. I guess the biggest thing is, we want to get the ball rolling, and I have an address. So, for me to do whatever build-out I have to do, you know what I mean? I, I, I have the certain things that the Board of Health requires in stations, certain feet.
Yeah, there's gotta be, this, I'm sorry to cut you off, but there's gotta be foot pedals, there's gotta be certain sinks in the room.
Well, right now, yeah, the sinks were-
And then go backwards and say, I have to move all this plumbing, can I ask for a variance? There's certain things that require in the room and stuff.
You need a slop sink, you need station, but you can use, uh, uh, mobile sinks now, they make that have the hot water to a certain degree that you need for hand washing stations, so you don't have to dig up the ground and do all the plumbing.
You don't want to walk and weigh over there to go wash your hands, or touching the sink, we can have a foot pedal.
That, that's also one of the things that you can do in a, in a shop, is also.
It's all spelled out in the regs, that, that's why.
It's more, it's really more to do with the Board of Health than, than would be the building inspector or the zoning, because the Board of Health does regulate this.
This just helps the agent do his job. So when he goes in there, he doesn't have like a checklist, he can say, oh yeah, that's right, let me see your sink, let me see your signage, let me see this. Let me check your injury reports. Do you have any injuries? You start going through all those questions.
Exactly.
Things that you forget. He's just gonna go in there and say, oh, it looks clean, and this and that, because there's no reg, so I think-
Well, I think it would be safe if you followed the Lakeville ones that we adopted already, and I'm sure it's, it's still going to be.
That's what I would recommend, if you follow the Lakeville ones, that we thought we adopted.
I'm not sure about the Lakeville. I'm familiar with Eastern, Dayton, not, I mean, Rainham, and out that way. I know some rules and regulations changed, like I know Taunton changed, because they had a problem with one of their studios, like four, three or four times. So they changed from taking the, the skin course from the Department of, in Quincy, the Department of Health, which is a requirement. They changed from having that to having a semester on anatomy at a college level, which I don't, they did that because-
Piercing and stuff.
Because, yeah, they did that because of the piercing. They were actually surgically putting stuff in people's skin.
They did, one, one of the towns you just mentioned is work, work full-time, so. We have our body art regs, and I actually changed ours there a couple years ago, because so we, we still require an AMP class for the piercing for that reason, but for tattooing, an AMP class, there's a couple pages on skin layers, and that's it, right?
Exactly.
That skincare class, so Ruth, she no longer teaches it there. Actually, I think she retired. But when she opted to no longer teach it, she said, any health department that has a public health nurse or a health agent that has some kind of medical background, I'll give you my class, all the documents are free, you can kind of tailor it to your needs, which I did, I now require that. If you don't have a full AMP class, for all tattoo artists, you have to have that, and the microblading.
That's, that's a lot-
Basically, you wind up sitting down with me for a couple hours, and we, I mean, you get into some really crazy stuff with the skin, and skin diseases, which to me is a lot more effective, so, you know, I mean, there's things like that, that-
We will not be doing piercing. I will not be doing piercing, so.
So, I mean, a lot of this is discussion for the actual regs when we get to that point. I think that what we're trying to get out of this now is that he's okay moving forward, and obviously, if the regs, we adjust something as we go. But presumably, the earliest we could do this would be at an next Board of Health meeting to start the discussion. We can get posted and have draft regulations or whatever, to discuss draft regulations at the next meeting.
So my, because we don't have regulations, there's nothing to say you can't do something now, right? I would just suggest if you do proceed, you know, if, if they're looking at a model after Lakeville, something like that, and take those regs, that way, if something gets passed, you're not caught off guard or surprised, and all of a sudden, now you have to do crazy changes, you know? That'd be my only suggestion, you know, and certainly, as, as we have our hearing, you can go-
My only thing would start me, would be the anatomy course. I mean, I went to college for art, and I've been doing this fourteen years, and I took the skin courses and everything else. So, if, hopefully, if that's not in the Lakeville, I won't be able to, you know.
That's, that's why I wouldn't, yeah, why, and I'm, I'm a big proponent of that skincare class, just because I know what it includes.
I know most of it regarding the piercing and microblading, you know?
Right.
Because you do break the skin, you know, we're, there's seven, there's seven, the seven layers of derm.
A rookie, and, and we let that one go too, and all of a sudden, you have a, even though they're gonna hold a liability, they're, they're gonna come and talk to us and say, you know, there was a serious infection, and whatever it was. I've actually had issues, we have complaints came in, people showing me pictures, and I'm like, who's that?
Well, most of that, most of that happens at home, believe it or not. And somebody sleeps with a dog, and you're looking at your tattoos, and all that stuff-
Is the thing all right? Do you have to give that aftercare as well?
And you know, you-
We're looking for that.
We can't, we can't follow them home and take care of it, you know, so. We do, do our best to do the aftercare. We use Acryphor for the aftercare. That was agreed to with the town of Eastern. We give a handout, and they sign it. So, it's, it's one of those things that, you know, if you, if you don't know what you're doing, you shouldn't be doing it in the first place.
So, I think, after our discussion from everyone, I think it might be safe if you follow the Lakeville regs and move forward. You guys can disagree with this. If you move forward and get it up and going, you should be on solid ground. Do you agree?
I'm, I'm actually taking a little back now, but you sort of, I was asked this week to look into the regs, and I and it was just a couple of days ago, I looked into it, and I said, here's, here's what it is, and then just now, I'm finding out it doesn't even exist, or.
Well, we don't know that, because-
That's the thing, so, maybe, it was almost like out of left field. Here I am thinking, it's just up to two days ago, that it's, it's still so I just, I don't know, I don't know why, it was lack of communication.
Second, how did that happen?
Within two days, it should have been like, oh, by the way, an email back saying, I don't even think this, so I can look as well, so we don't somebody doesn't come before us and say, do you even have regs?
I, I mean, I, I'm personally up for the, the highest regulations that you guys put forward, because it makes the shop better.
I just don't have it in place as well. I think it's still in place, but.
Yeah, we spent a lot of time trying to find them, trying to piece them down, if we thought we had them.
I have two comments. I was part of that process back in the day, and I was surprised to find out the same. My concern is that we need to first verify, and you can do that through minutes of meetings to see what was approved. Just because someone tore something up or didn't implement it, doesn't mean it isn't a regulation.
Our minutes do show that, that it was approved.
That's right. So if you start there, you find out whether the regulation exists or doesn't exist. And if it exists, it's the Lakeville model, because I know Mr. Bernado's one presented. The second comment, and I've stayed out of these discussions, because there's been some interest in my building, but there are the buildings.
Yeah.
However, my partner couldn't be here tonight, so I will say this. I understand how government works all too well. The problem is- The problem is, when you own a business like this, and I put my money where my mouth is, I took a building that was defunct, deplorable, and turned it into something. To say that someone has to wait two or three months for approval, um, it just can't happen. Because we get calls every day for space and as a business owner, I need to rent space, I need to pay my bills. So, um, I think there's a happy medium, but we need to have some dialogue first. You know, if we can find out next week whether this reg is in place, ineffective or not. And two, if it isn't, then I'm just asking the board to fast track it so that we can make sure that we build a space that conforms to all the regulations, you know. We have, we have things that we want to see too as builders. So we just want to find a balance between all of it.
I think we just gave him the opportunity to move forward, uh, a moment ago. So initially, the process probably would take that long. But I agree with, uh, Mr. Tanis that if there's no regs, then you can go ahead and move forward, so.
Just, just move forward cautiously, knowing that if in the past, you know, there was a model based off Lakeville, I would get a copy of that and, and base that, especially with his establishment, you know, fixtures and things like that. That way, you know, if that's what we end up going with as a model, then if it seems like that's the priority or the lean, you know. They'll, they'll, you know, you know, it would be hearing, public hearing, asking for an opportunity for the public to, to have an input, you would have to report as well, you know?
Yep.
So.
The only question I had, did we check with, uh, town clerk? Nothing?
In what a slot?
They didn't check for minutes of meetings.
Kevin sent us the minutes there.
Yeah, we have the minutes.
And the regulation was that?
So whether there's a regulation in place or not, he still has to file with the board to get a permit from the board, which would be at the next meeting. And if there's no regulations in place, they say the permit, you can't stop them from getting a permit. And if the regulations are in place, he's got to follow the regulations. So either way, it sounds like at the next meeting, he's getting his permit, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, for the record, I'm in favor of your business.
I think we all are.
Yeah, definitely. I have no, no objection to that. I just want them to have the tools to do their job. And there's no, for the next business coming in, everybody's up by the same playing field. That's all.
I totally agree.
And I, and I personally worked on it, so if I went through that whole thing, you know, if something doesn't exist, it's actually disappointing, so.
Well, I did it right fourteen years ago and I want to do it right again, so.
Yeah.
I'm in favor of it, that's, that's.
If I can shoot for August first, that'd be awesome, but I mean.
Well, that should be. That should happen.
We have a special meeting just for that hearing.
When's that next meeting? July tenth, right? Something like that.
If you want to hold a meeting between now and then, to start the process, just make sure it's, uh, separate from the prior. You know, just, just do that, just body art, it's done, and maybe go on it on July eighth, then it's going to be a closed bar July meeting. You could have the public hearing then.
I appreciate it.
Would that help even more?
Yes.
I just, I, I mean, like I said, you can move forward now and follow nothing, because we have nothing. And there's nothing for us to stop you, right? If you did move forward, if it looks like in the past, you know, we were going towards the Lakeville regs, I would suggest pulling up Lakeville and following those. Um, that way you're not surprised in the end, you know? I just hate to see you put work into something and then.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would definitely start with that one. Because if, if we come to find out, at least you're on the right, if they decide, if the board decides to go with the model one, but that one would entail adding, like making the decisions. So you could actually look at both, if anybody has time to read both and plug in what you want to plug in on the model one. At least you have that.
Yeah, the model, it breaks it all down for you, you know, the, the space and what you need for the, the whole nine yards. It's just, like you said, the town might want to change something and they can, they have, they have the ability to do that, you know?
But you have a business, you've been doing it for a long time, so I don't, I don't think it's going to be.
I have absolutely no, no issue with expediting this due to a snafu here. Nobody knows what's happened to this, so. Hopefully we can get you in next month and get it permitted and.
I appreciate it. I know it's a lot of work, but I appreciate it.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope.
Any questions? No? All set?
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
We'll be talking next month.
Want to rejoin the meeting?
Yeah. Okay, moving on to, Kevin, you got to go.
So, in like ten minutes?
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, moving on to four B, uh, what, we'll discuss an act, a what town of Dayton, trash bag contract. Do we have numbers?
So we put this out, our solicitation in quotes, to four companies and, um, we only heard back from one company, which happens to be Mansfield Paper, which is a company we used in the past. Bids were due on May twentieth or something like that. They gave us a price and the price is only good till May thirty first of twenty twenty-one, so the price has already expired. So we reached out to them and said, hey, if we order these bags June tenth, what's the price? He can't get us the price. Apparently the price of raw materials have gone up like twenty-five percent since January first, so he's like, I can't give you a contract for the full year. So we're kind of at the point now where basically we get the price from them, we can buy as many bags as we can buy and shove into the trailer at the DPW and, and go from there. But anything we order now, like on June tenth, we're not going to get it till the end of July. I, I don't, I don't know what else to do because we're not going to get a price that's going to be good for three hundred and sixty-five days. The price is going to be good for ten days.
Sure it is.
So it's still a contract for fiscal year twenty twenty-two or whatever. We just happen to make one order and that's it, you know, and that's. And we talked to Mr. Ferry already and he said we can stack a few pallets somewhere and pull some equipment out to get us through at least the fall or whatever. Come wintertime, he needs the inside space, but.
Use that first.
Right. And that's where we're at right now.
Well, I'm sure we'll get the funding, so that's not.
Well, yeah, if we don't get the funding, then we get a different problem, but right, so, um. But yeah, because right now we're probably going to run out of bags the end of July, so. Because we've been using a lot more bags last year than anticipated and of course, when we did the budget for last year, we didn't say, hey, we need a lot more. We thought we were going to be able to, but the large bags went a lot faster. Small didn't go as fast as we expected.
I'm thinking, how does this work out in a new fiscal year? Is this going to be an old bill going forward or are we going to, or we can probably, uh, that's what I'm looking for.
It's an encumbrance.
Encumbrance, yes.
So where is the money now to pay for the bags?
It's in fiscal year twenty-two, after town meeting votes at Monday night.
So then it's going to, how can you enter into contract this year for monies that haven't been appropriated yet? It's not legal.
Yeah.
Right.
You can't do that.
You have to wait till after.
Right.
After it's voted.
Unless you have money in this fiscal year's budget, you cannot enter into contract for monies that haven't been appropriated.
We don't, so, but if we wait till July first to order the bags, then we, we're going to run out of bags.
So do you have any money this year?
We have thirteen dollars left in the account.
Sorry, that's okay. And, uh, the money gets appropriated at July first, right? July, it's June seventh for July first.
Well, right now, we have a contract with Mansfield Paper that is good through June thirtieth.
So.
We spent all the money we had.
I'm sorry, so why can't we do a reserve fund transfer to buy bags in this fiscal year to get us through into next fiscal year?
That might be what we need to do. We didn't find out till this afternoon that.
How much, how, how much money, say, would be a month's worth of bags?
A month's worth?
Well, for.
There's minimum order, I.
Well, how much, how much was budgeted last year?
Thirty-two thousand and change.
So.
I gotcha.
You gotcha. You got it?
So the town administrator is saying, order whatever we can.
Say three, three thousand dollars is going to get you equivalent, equivalent of a month.
There's a minimum order.
What's the minimum?
Like four pallets.
What's four pallets?
Two hundred eighty cases.
How much is that?
Twelve thousand dollars.
Okay, so have you checked, there is money in the reserve fund?
Oh, yeah, there's money in other places probably that we can pull.
So, so see, we're at a problem because you can't enter into a contract this fiscal year for money that hasn't been appropriated. You, you're going to run out of bags, but that's what the reserve fund is for. Thank you for clearing that up, because we didn't want to make, make sure we didn't step into it. No. So you have to, just enough to get us by, but obviously, and still not fall short. You have to figure out exactly what, what we need and then, and go with that, that number. We, I guess we just.
The minimum would be plenty then, twelve thousand dollars.
It'll bring us into the fiscal year.
Oh, yeah.
And what's the price differential between the new contract and the, and the existing one?
The new contract is nine dollars a case cheaper.
So we're not saving any money by doing that.
But it's already run out. May thirty first was the, they gave us seven days.
Oh, no, for the new, the new price, but the contract for fiscal year twenty-one technically is good through June thirtieth. But my guess is they probably may, I don't know.
And all the stores, they, they don't have, they didn't stockpile, they don't have enough? They.
What, enough bags right now?
Yeah.
We, we thought we did and we usually do till like September or October, but this past year was a lot more bags we used than we anticipated.
So look at the tonnage that went through the roof.
Right.
I mean, there's nothing, people were home war.
Right.
And honestly, we thought we were going to be okay, but it just, then they keep, usually the numbers go up and there's a peak and then they come back down. Well, they, they only came back down a little bit and so, right, should we have asked to transfer money earlier or whatever to do this, maybe? But we're not, we weren't that far off. We're only like two weeks off of running out of bags.
Do we get a sample from the new, the new bidder?
It's not a new bidder, it's the old bidder.
Have they changed any of the specifications?
Same company, it's all the same.
Can they give us four thousand samples?
So wait a minute, so you're saying the company that we currently use rebid at a lower number, so it's the same company? Okay. So.
And we have a contract with, right now through June thirtieth.
And when do you think we'll run out of bags? And I need you to be honest.
It's right around July thirty first.
It's July thirty, July thirty first?
July thirty first.
We'll run out of bags?
We're going to run out of bags.
So why can't we?
They need a one month, solid month, right?
No, six to eight week lead time.
Oh, that was my next question. That was my next question.
Well, you can place the order and say, I want it by July first. And when it comes in, that's when you pay it.
Well, he was just saying, you can't do that.
Yeah.
That was what we thought we were going to.
Can't do that.
You can't place the order without the money to pay the contract.
Mm-hmm.
I want a pickle.
Yeah. It, it takes that long for that lead time.
Every single time, it's been eight weeks.
Yep.
And now it might be longer because of shipping and fuel and getting the raw materials, who knows?
So even if you order now on the reserve fund transfer, we're still risking running out of bags for a week or two?
Yes.
We're going to be close.
Well, so what we usually do is we start rationing, so when Hannaford calls and says we want ten, we send them five. That kind of thing. And so we can, we can stretch it. The problem is our trash usage at the town has been going up faster than population growth. So it's been a, it's, it's been a problem.
Now, the, the, the other answer is, just go as much as we can, place the order. Oh, you can't, because how are you going to tell, you tell people to just use regular bags?
We've got plenty of small bags, it's the large bags we're running out of.
If you were out a week and people had to make do with, with small bags for a week or two, I get it, but, I mean, a month, that's, that's terrible.
Yeah, they're going to.
I think the reserve fund transfer is probably the best way to go.
And when the quote came in and it said, May thirty first, I'm like, that's got to be a typo.
Or is it May thirty first of next year or something, right, yeah.
And so we emailed him back and just said, and it took him time to get back to us and he's like, no, it's just, we're having a real hard time actually. He said, because of the volatile of pl- plastic market, their supplier, he said, that's all we could, so he actually gave us like seven days.
So, I mean, we can go to the selectmen and say, we need to order bags and they can figure out a payment.
Yeah, talk to Mike. Go talk to Mike Monday and.
Because they're the ones that have to do the contract, you know, I mean, they're the ones that are, are doing it, so. And right, they'll know if they got fifteen thousand, twenty thousand dollars, that they can move over knowing that we're going to get it right back or whatever. It's only temporarily like pulled up forward and then it's going to be pushed back because the bill's not going to come until August.
So I think we need another meeting like ASAP. So one, we have to deal with the, the body art, two, we got to deal with the trash bags. Can you get another quote from them, another bid?
He is supposed to get.
Like seven days, um, I propose a, a meeting next Wednesday, the ninth, I don't care what time.
The selectmen are also meeting on the ninth, so we can meet right before them?
I mean, it's, it's two things.
Yeah, but the thing, we can meet right before them even, and then we could vote and then they could go right to their meeting.
Long as it's up to four thirty, I don't care. I, I, it won't be long, but if the, if their bids or their quotes are only going to be good for seven days and we're kind of going to, we're in a bad situation here.
That's an awful lot of lead time.
If we can figure out, if we can get the reserve fund transfer for the amount to order the minimum. But if, or, or figure out where we can pull money from to cover that cost.
Should be able to find that out Monday when he talks to the TA.
Yeah, maybe you can.
Or I can go talk to him.
We've been in conversation with the TA and he's been texting me during the meeting what the, what's, what's the board doing, because he's obviously in a little bit.
Is there other monies that you can, how do you, how do you, I'm trying to sweep it over, not sweep it over.
I don't know how your accounts are set up, but do you have other accounts in that same account number?
We're actually doing one where we can just.
You can deficit spend one account if you have a surplus in the others?
Well, the bottom line is positive.
And it all depends on how your, your budget is structured.
Four thirty-three there is, is kind of a rough one.
And unfortunately, I have to, I have another meeting at seven, so I have to run out.
So the problem we run into here is you'll see that the landfill recyclery is off the charts. Fourteen thousand dollars in the hole, which we weren't expecting because everybody is cleaning out the house, isn't throwing away all their crap still. So we went way in the hole on that one, but you notice the total down the bottom right there, the estimated remaining balance based on projected numbers is only two thousand dollars left over in four thirty-three.
Does this, just double checking, does this, um, include what we're doing at the transfer station with the, removing, uh?
Multi item pickup? Yes. Uh, well, I threw in an extra thousand dollars on the recyclery and fifteen hun, well, like thirty percent more on the, the bulky. Still not twelve grand worth.
So, so this is the time where we really work with Tom down there, crushing things down, making sure that we're not, uh, sending things off and then later on, we overspend.
But we can also hold a dumpster and not call for delivery until July second.
That's, if we have to do that, but that's, this is where.
We did that last year.
Everyone has to be talking to each other because that's what happens. You get, you get a bill and all of a sudden, oh, it was, it was June twentieth, there it is, and you're over.
I remember when I was on the, on the board, selecting, years ago. And so at the end of May, we were getting all these requests from different departments looking, because they needed, you know, five hundred bucks a year, a thousand dollars there. And they were talking to the other departments and we were signing sheets that, you know, highway was giving police a thousand dollars, uh, you know, collector's office was good, the assessors was giving the collector, treasurer collector's office two hundred and fifty dollars, just to square everything away, because the money was there, so it was easy. It wasn't a reserve fund transfer, one department happened to have a surplus because of whatever, another department needed it, boom, made that switch. Whatever the accountant does, that was it. I don't know if we still do that.
Yeah, we still do it. We can still do that, but.
So see if there's other departments that have a surplus by any chance that we could borrow from, steal from?
I think you could only use it in that line, like four thirty-three, that's all you could use it in. So this, this ledger doesn't show the line for trash bags.
Yeah, because they have thirteen dollars.
It's the very, it's the very last one.
No, no, this is not a ledger from the accountant. This is a ledger from the accountant.
Oh, oh, um.
This does not show the trash bag.
Oh, it's the next page, sorry.
I don't have that.
I didn't print.
That's how I need to see how it's structured, so I can give you, uh, is there anything else with the fifty-two eighty accounts? Or is it just?
Because this is fifty-two eighty-one, so there must be, I'm, I'm sorry, fifty-five eighty-one. So if there are other things with the fifty-five eighty accounts, we might be able to deficit spend. I don't know if you can deficit spend, what was it, twelve grand? No.
That's tough for a minimum order, that's, that's a hefty chunk of change.
That's the, it's the next sheet, it only had the trash bags on it. They don't, that's what you're looking for.
So, so that's, so that's all it's in that account.
They want to deficit spend their reserve fund transfer or?
I just summarize it on one sheet so I could do my own tally, because I can't work with a P D.
Right.
I think we should probably schedule that quick meeting.
Yeah.
Or whatever transpires by.
If we're in the selectman, we can kick our recommendation right to them and they can vote to do whatever they want to do.
I, I don't see an ability to deficit spend.
No, I don't, I don't think so either.
Sorry, I don't see an ability to deficit. Sorry, I don't see an ability to deficit spend.
I mean, ultimately with that grade of an order, next year, the trash bag line is gonna be in a surplus.
Yeah.
So they just need to know that, hey, we don't have a choice because this is the minimum order. We really would only need, say, $3,000 or $4,000 to cover.
He showed it to me.
With room to spare, but, because we can, you know, next year, there could be up to an $8,000 or so surplus.
So will we all in favor of June 9th?
What time the selectmen start? 6?
Dave, Larry, do you know what time the selectmen start their meetings?
6 o'clock.
6.
Doing 5 or something, I guess.
We only have those two items, right?
So, million dollar question, what do we do if we don't have bags for a 1 to 10 day? Because right now, in my calculations, even if we order on the 9th, we could have a 10 day gap between the 31st and when these bags come in.
When you sell the, when you sell the small, you give them two?
We start rationing too. This place is order five or 10 cases at a time.
But if we've had a, well, that you can control, but you can't control use, right? The consumers are using them. The trash is up. So if ultimately we have, you know, higher trash volume, we could potentially have an issue where we don't have bags to put trash in.
We have smaller bags, plenty of small.
Problem with selling.
People have, you know, I mean, it's not like you're buying one bag at a time. I mean, I have a roll of Tencent in my drawer at home.
I actually have none, I have to buy some.
I mean, that, you know, 10, 10 bags covers me, you know, over two months, so.
And Todd will make a one, what is it, one call, a reverse call and say, hey, this week, bags, no bags this week, and you could just put it in any bag, we'll accept it.
Code red?
As a citizen of Dayton, a lot of people won't buy the small bags because they feel like it's, it's not gonna do the job.
Right.
So then I look at those small bags and say, no, I'll do something else. I'm not gonna buy a small bag. And I think the majority of them will do that.
Thanks, Dave.
I get it, I just. Hopefully the stores have enough of a surplus and people have enough surplus at home that you can get by if there is a week period or a 10 day period.
So does the board have the authority to issue a temporary reprieve on trash bag use if we actually do run out?
I think it would happen. I guess we'll pass that when we get to it. Let's just place the order.
One week trash holiday.
Place the order and we can only, it'll be, actually, everybody will be happy about it. They'll say, oh, they, they messed up our game, so. Not messed up, I shouldn't say that, but.
I think we'll probably have a better idea come July 8th.
Mr. Chairman, I have to step out, I have another meeting.
Thank you, that's fine.
Thank you.
Are we gonna make a motion to continue this to June 9th for a special meeting? Is that the?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to continue the, the trash bag.
5 o'clock.
Motion being second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, and the motion carries. We'll table till our next meeting, June 9th. Hey, look at the next one, use of FEP grant additional funds, those by trash bags.
Number one is only like $1,400, right?
One can dream.
And specific things that it can. Be used for, did you bring that up? So this is another grant we got from FEP. If you remember way back last, about a year ago, we got, it was supposed to be three waves, but they only gave us like two and then CARES kicked in and took over. Well, FEP gave us another grant and the money can be used for only very, very specific things, like contact tracings, giving out vaccines, that kind of thing. DITON, unfortunately, we're not doing the vaccine here, so we can't use it for that. So contact tracing is about the only thing we can use it for because Roz and I have been doing that. So the money could be applied to that. I don't see anything else that was on there that we could use it for. So we have to spend it by June 30th. So I don't know what else to do with it.
I ran into some issues to spend mine and I asked, because the vaccine one was very vague, I said, what if I ordered two computers, two laptops? And she goes, you need a laptop to do contact tracing to get online and to submit the IIS databases. So she goes, if you need a laptop, you need a laptop, that's covered. Just saying.
That's how we get the computer on them, right?
You just, yeah, you just have to pay anything to submit for reimbursement, unless the town has a contract already with somebody. So she, I forget her name.
Data management is in there, monitoring of travelers, risk communication, support public messaging.
Yeah, so the computer fell under the data management.
Do we need a laptop?
She, I mean, I even, I said, like, I bought a handful of, like, small folding tables and, well, if you needed to set up a vaccine clinic, which we did, I mean, we were outside back in February, a drive-through in March, we needed tables, so. I mean, obviously that happened before this, but all that got covered, I used them at town meetings, so. Just have to use your imagination.
We actually have $4,017, so.
There you go.
How about a drive-through window for bulky item stickers?
I like that. I think, I think that definitely. Fits the bill.
Vending machine to give out.
Trash bag vending machine.
Yeah, I don't think we need another laptop. I mean, maybe we do, but, I don't know, but even the laptop's on $4,000, so.
We couldn't. No, we don't spend it, we lose it, right?
Yeah.
I mean, you could have used, you could use it for PPE type stuff, but, I mean.
Well, don't get me wrong, the $4,000 for our contact tracing, because it's all overtime, it's not a problem for.
As long as it's documented overtime, you can't use it as part of your straight time.
Right. And that's part of the problem between CARES and FEMA and all that, because I get straight time from 28 to 35 hours, so it's only above that that this would pay for, so.
Get up.
But, yeah, unless somebody comes up with something else, I.
Our nurse has been doing contact tracing again, right?
She's been doing some of it, only on the unique cases that we can't handle, but she also consults with us every morning as we go over our problems with her and she gives us answers. So that would possibly fall under the surveillance and case identification, including but not limited to public health epidemiological investigation activities such as contact follow-up. So what she's doing is giving us the information to go back to the people with, so I think it would fall under that, so. And this money is from January 14th to June 30th, so it's not a problem for us to spend $4,000 on contact tracing during that time.
So it can be, because we didn't get the money until April, it can be anything that was spent prior to that January. If you need to apply it to something, then.
Let's say if we can't come up with something else, there's that, so. But we just wanted everybody to know we got another grant.
So I, I don't know all the logistics of, of that grant parameters. Cabinets for PPE, you both know, no, wouldn't work?
Yep, you can use it for that.
Think so?
Yep.
Oh, because you needed it for vaccine, but we didn't do vaccine?
Doesn't matter.
So here's the reason. We bought cabinets from Home Depot with emergency preparedness funds, if I'm not mistaken. The cabinets came in severely damaged, so much so that, I mean, we can use them, but they're awful. My discussions with the manager, I think will lead to a refund eventually, but at this point, with the dialogue I'm having him, I'm not, I'm not taking new cabinets from him. I'm only taking a refund. So we need new cabinets and Home Depot is not gonna supply them. We, I would go to another vendor for them. So once we get the refund, it's probably gonna go back to the general fund, so we need cabinets anyway. So, you know, the taxpayer isn't losing any money, we're gonna get the money back, and we could use these funds to order new PPE cabinets. I think that might be a why, because they weren't cheap. They were, they were pricey.
They even said I could use it by desk if I needed it.
Well, no, and that's not, I guess it was a matter of, because we weren't doing the vaccine and that's why, but technically, all the supplies we have for the vaccines that never happened, we have to keep them somewhere.
Right.
And now they're just boxes sitting on the floor.
And they need to be on the locking key, so. So that might be a, that might be a good way to do it and we could probably, you know, use quite a bit of it.
Is that a motion by the board?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to purchase cabinets for PPE, and I'm gonna extend that and say if there's any additional PPE. I don't know what the future's going to bring, but, you know, when COVID first hit, I had a very, very small amount of PPE that was left over from H1N1. Without that, the first two months of COVID, COVID would have been a disaster. So I know, I don't wanna be a hoarder, however, I think it's important to have some form of decent stock and supply of hand sanitizer masks, things like that. So if you get the cabinets and there's still money left and you have room left in the cabinets, I would like to extend that cabinets. And any additional PPE that you feel should be on hand.
So one of the things we've done is we got an intern doing an inventory and some of the stuff like the gloves, they have an expiration date. And what we were gonna do is just rotate those into the fire department and just keep, keep the same number on hand, but they're always.
Yep.
Good enough. So that was our goal, but again, without the place to keep it, without the intern, without the money to buy it, it was, but, so we're, we're getting to where we need to be to be prepared, so.
It's a long motion.
Yeah, sorry.
So the motion is, if I got it correct here, we're gonna buy the necessary cabinets for the storage of PPE. And if any funds are left, we will buy additional PPE for future use. And I'll step down in a second. I think we've beat this to death with discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We'll go by that one. Moving on to 4D, the Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day. Fall of 2021 is not gonna happen because the $10,000 we were putting aside for the Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day was cut by the FinCom. And I'm probably going to try to get it on again in the fall meeting and far as spring event, hopefully. So that's where we're at with that one.
It's too bad.
I know. 4E, we will discuss an act book collection bin. I guess we've had a few people interested in putting some bins out. Areas of town or one somewhere?
Yeah, he's looking to put one at the transfer station and then one somewhere else in town, whether that be town hall, library, DPW, they, they were open to any kind of suggestion.
During COVID, we did have many people call asking where they could donate books, and of course, we referred them to the library. But the library doesn't have the capacity or capability of taking any more books, so people don't wanna throw them out. There, there used to be a book bin at the school, it is no longer there. We used to have one here at town hall.
It's my suggestion, because these types of bins seem to collect trash.
Yes.
In, on, and around them. They're an eyesore, then what happens is they don't be continuously maintained, they are forgotten about. And it becomes a nightmare to deal with. If we were to put one, I'd probably say in the transfer station. That way at least it's not open to regular traffic, so someone can dump a TV and mattresses at night. Right, it's being watched. There's still an option for people to come and use it, you know, when the transfer station's open. That would be my suggestion. I've seen too many of these types of bin, collection bins, you know, starts off as a great idea, the, five years later, the, two years later, whatever it is, the, the, the company goes bankrupt, that bin just sits there and collects trash.
We could start with one at the transfer station.
I would, I would definitely request a key, so that way if that happens, at least we have.
Well, I think that was one of the things on their thing is.
It is on there, yeah, yeah. So I would, I would say, you know, start one if, put it at the transfer station and request a key.
So the only thing I'll add to it is I, I believe the board of selectmen have, if, if this board was to vote in the affirmative, I believe the board of selectmen has to finally approve it. Simply because we wouldn't be, the town and the town's vendors wouldn't be collecting the books. It's actually someone from the outside. There's no contract with the town, nothing to do with the town. So I think that the board of selectmen would have to just ratify your vote and allow it to go at the transfer station.
So now I'll, I'll make a motion, sorry.
To recommend to the board of selectmen one.
I'm sorry, I was just making a motion and asked if you want anything.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm good with one or even two up there. That is the big problem, is the trash ends up getting out there.
I think at the transfer station, the trash, the attendant will have control over what goes in there, so.
Yeah, and it's.
It's a great idea.
I mean, for them, to me, that's also a, a better location if I had a bin, because now it's monitored, you know, as far as any vandalism. So I'll make a motion that we send a recommendation to approve a, one of these book bins at the transfer station with their approval.
Step down in a second, a motion. So the motion is made in second, are all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion carries. Moving on to 4F, we were gonna have a discussion, hopefully all three of us would be here on what our vision is on the five-year plan moving forward. But I personally would prefer to wait till all three of us are here.
Yeah, I think so.
So if there's a motion to table that one?
I think motion to table 4F.
4F, I'll step down, second motion to table 4F.
If I can just, oh, go ahead, finish.
No, that's okay.
I was gonna say, I just wanna say that three years ago, we did a five-year plan. The, the town administrator said, hey, I want everybody to do a five-year plan. So we're three years into it, so it's a good time to reassess your five years and look, and continue to look ahead, so. That's why it's on the agenda tonight, so.
Okay. We can add this to our next meeting and discuss whether it's gonna be three or five. So all's in favor, table? Aye. All right, he said the motion carries once, isn't it? Okay, moving on to 4G, we will discuss an act summer meeting and executive session dates, schedule, et cetera.
So right now, our current schedule is set for the second, to Thursday of each month, so right now it's July 8th and August 12th. You all have calendars in front of you. And we've obviously just scheduled the meeting for June 9th. We had also kicked around the idea of doing a workshop for the Title V, the septic regulation changes. Obviously, we get to deal with body art regulation changes, but we were gonna do that at the next meeting, but.
So what are the dates in July and August?
July 8th and August 12th. Those are the, the current meeting schedule. And now June 9th. So are we gonna run an ad in the paper and say body art regs? Do we say and revise septic regs too and put it all in one ad, or does that have to be two separate?
I don't think the body art regs even ask to go to the paper. It just has to be posted like a regular meeting that we're having a hearing.
Oh, okay.
Oh, that's good.
Because it regs.
You can if you want to, but.
Well, that would be up to the board and whether you want to or not, but.
I always do, just because I think it's a good practice, a little more open about it, but. Although there's plenty of times, so, yeah, it doesn't matter.
For what, the body art? But I'm saying, if we do one, if we do an ad in the paper and we do it with the body art, do we say and revising the septic regs and put it all in one ad to save money and effort and do it all at one meeting?
So they would have to be approved and ready to go to a hearing because you'd, you either have to print the whole regulation or changes to the regulation in the paper. Or say, a full copy of the regulation or full copy of the changes to the regulation are available.
So July 8th, we would just be discussing the regulations and if we decide to move forward with them, obviously with the input of a possible.
And I believe the Title V, you have to notify, I believe you have to like notify the septic installers and engineers and things like that.
Right.
A little more. It's just like, there's, there's a couple weird ones. Wells are another one that has to be more publicized. Title V is one, but body art's not.
And we haven't even. And we haven't even had a workshop yet to discuss the regulations, I think it's too far away.
Yeah, no, it was just, it was a thought, it was a matter of.
Yeah, I know.
Because if we can't do body art on July eighth, and we're going to be doing it on August twelfth for the official notification, and we can do the workshop ahead of time, then August twelfth, we could, it would be the night to do them both, is what I was getting at.
We'll have to get pizza or something.
So what's the verdict for the workshop?
Oh, no, we didn't come up with any dates, yeah, so.
I'd see when Kevin's available for that, too.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we could add this one to July ninth, so everybody can have their calendars and pick it out, I mean, the problem is we're running into the end of June and July, get to be very high.
I think at least our regular meetings, I think July eighth and August twelfth should be fine, and then we can go from there.
Yeah, we always have one if necessary, anyway, if something.
Yeah, who knows with mosquitoes this year? That's going to turn out, so we may have some.
I hope we have a year like last year.
Plymouth County didn't. Plymouth County had a bad year last year, I don't know why they stayed out of Bristol, but. Take it.
Okay, so we can, let's get a motion to accept those dates as the summer meeting schedule, did we come an executive? We could do that on a regular meeting night, too.
Prior to or after?
Okay.
Make a motion that we have our regular meetings, regular Board of Health meeting July eighth and August twelfth.
I'll step down a second, that. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's no change from.
Our normal.
Our normal stuff, right?
So, we don't get a summer?
No.
We're not meeting this summer.
There'll be no time off for the Board of Health.
Didn't get last summer off either, so.
Okay, inspectors report, oh, any public input?
No, but what about the executive session?
Oh.
What do we decide with that?
We'll, we'll put it on a meeting night.
Prior to.
Either the eighth or the.
Oh, okay.
Probably the eighth would be the best. No public input, inspectors reports, health agent?
Uh, we've already talked about COVID, we already talked about the money and the budget. Park tests are starting to come in, we're getting a lot of these, empty lots have been hanging around for a while, that people are starting to submit park apps for. We're also getting an awful lot of irrigation well applications coming through, so. But other than that, bulky item pickup week is next week, so we've been selling a lot of stickers last week, the week before. It's just, it's a lot of stickers, about half of what we did last year, though, last year was very busy, because of, of course, everybody was, was home at the beginning of COVID. So it's about half of last year, but it's still a lot of stuff, so, but we use the message boards by DPW, they now have two of them, and that seems to be, same thing as when we put out stuff for the vaccine or household hazardous waste day, they seem to be a very good net to catch people with, so. That's going pretty well, June, July are a lot of vacation time in here, so hopefully that we can use the time that we got, because it's kind of hard to take the time, but we're trying to figure it out, so life goes on.
How about something you mentioned about a lot of irrigation wells, do you know of any towns, Matt, that have restrictions on irrigation wells anywhere? Because that's the same thing as the water uses.
You know, you know, requirements, things you have to do to have one, but no, no restriction.
No limitations or restrictions?
Not as far as being allowed to have one at all.
The only thing I would like is, I think, because you can't use the water, that if we had a sign, like a certain size sign that people had to display on the house or whatever, in the yard or whatever, so people driving by know that you're on a well when you're watering your lawn.
So what, does the water districts require that? Because I know some towns, the water district requires that, so that way they know, because usually, they're the ones that wind up handing out the fines.
I don't think so.
I'm not aware of it, no. The only thing, I'm sorry.
Oh, I was going to ask you for your report.
The only thing I would add to that is that if you're seeing an uptick in requests for irrigation wells, just have our two departments discuss it, because if there are any cross-connections, then we need to discuss whether it's potable water or not. If it's not going to be, test the water's not going to be tested, then there can't be any, you know, cross-connections or spigots. It needs to be a closed system, so that, that's my only comment.
Can you report, please? Do you have a report for the board?
Nothing to report, sir.
Okay, great, thank you. No animal inspector? I was not present at the minute, the meeting of May sixth, so we can, we'll be catching that next meeting.
Okay.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Step down a second, a motion to adjourn, any further discussion? Seeing all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, good night, everybody, good night, cable.